I want to thank the Supervisory Committees from EDR, Levantana, Las Vegas, for their continuous support and hard work in making this community the best as possible. In EDR, Steve Kimi, Jones, Andy Peterson, Levantana de Mar, Denise Leven, Hans Walsh, and in Las Vegas, Marta Oviza and Gary Laver. Yes, thank you Serena. Okay, the next is, I want to remind you of all the public meeting dates that we still have ahead of us. The next town hall is going to be in September 29. The Developers Meeting is going to be in November 1st. General Assembly Meetings, November 2, EDR. And in November 3, Levantana de Mar, Las Vegas. We still have a workshop to come in July 11. Newsletter is the next point in the agenda. I think so that many of you have been already registered at the webpage. I can tell you that still the newsletter is one of the most visited sites on the web. It is with great enthusiasm that the Supervisors Committee and myself see that because it's one of the best ways to get in communication with you, letting you know each month what we are doing, the projects we have, and general information about town, like the new streets in town, etc. Besides newsletter, has very interesting information about, for example, do you see the turtles right here right now on the golf course? In the past, the turtles were at the Cachanilla Pool. But they were dispersed, which one was on the corners, the other ones were in the trenches. We have been seeing them for many years, at least me, for almost five years now. But I didn't know what they mean or what they were there. The good notice is that the person who donated them came to my office and said, "You know, this has meaning, they are art." So I told her, "Well, let me know all about the project." The turtles means March to the Sea of the Turtles. That's a real thing. That's where they are right now together, and they are marching to the sea. They are more or less half-moon definition. So they are going to the, where they belong, the sea. So that's, if, I think so you have seen many people taking pictures of the crocodile at Highway 5. So I think so this will be an icon to take pictures to them. And this will promote the ranch all around. So right now, they have a new home here, which is still the whole community of Eldorado Ranch. The next one is Supervisors' Positions that we have for renewal in November during the GA meetings. And this one is one position at Levantana de Mar, and the other one is at Las Vegas. Last year, we elected the Supervisors of the EDR. So it is going to be until next year that we will have EDR new Supervisors meeting. Or we will re-elect the ones that are staying in place. All the information that you need to know if you want to send your proposition to be included as a candidate, or if you want to make a proposition for Sony, are contained in the newsletters. Or you can contact Steve Kimi or one of your Supervisors to get all that information, or myself. Okay, the next point is one that has been one of my main points since I came in, which is Safety and Security. We have been working very hard on Safety and Security. The last one, new thing, is the, there is a ban on all off-road vehicles that comes from, that don't pertain to the community. This means all the people who is renting, or all the people... Okay, right now, if you are an owner in Levantana or Eldorado, Las Vegas, the only thing you have to do if you have off-road vehicles is go to Customer Service with Serena and her team. And they will give you stickers as in your cars, and you can go in with off-road vehicles, being a member of Eldorado Ranch or a resident. If you are not, then you are not allowed to come into an off-road vehicle. If it is people who is visiting us from other camps, any other camp, I don't want to give any number, any name. If they come in off-road vehicles, they will not be permitted to entrance. So if you have friends that are visiting you, please tell them not to come with their off-road vehicles because they will not be allowed to come into Levantana de Mar. The ban is in this side. Why? Because there is this problem with all the people going in ATVs or Rangers into the golf courses and causing thousands of trouble, especially in the big holidays. Right now, I am writing a new policy that we are going to send to all the property management companies. They are already aware of this, we already have a meeting with them. And we talk all of this with them. They like it, but don't like it at the same time. But they understand the necessity of this measure. So it's on place right now. In very close time, we will do the policies and send it to all the people involved. Okay. About safety, we have been putting around many announces of speed. Slow, here in Las Vegas, there are a couple of turns that are blocked at the side because of turning the curve. So we are putting new signs for the people to be aware of dangerous situations or can be dangerous. And please slow down the turn and wear of our roads is because of people's speed at the roads. Especially in EDR, we have a lot of people. In the curbs, when they are very fast, they destroy the curb and that make the washouts and all that. So please drive slow. That doesn't mean like a snail, 20 miles is good enough, 25. Okay, the next one is Collection of Foot. We have been working hard at that. We are doing a good job. Many people who was a vendor, conven... They make a contract with Conny, let's say like that. And they make a payment plan. Many of that people has become regular, so we are having a good success in that. And we are collecting still people who owns more than five, six, seven years. It's not easy because of the situation, you know, many people have say, "Well, I just have a piece of dirt, what's happening?" Two weeks ago, I took all the collecting people to make a tour for the whole ranch because they always work from the office, and the office doesn't show too much to them. So I took them to the golf course, I took them to the pickleball courts, I took them to the tennis courts, I took them to the Cachanilla Pools. And I showed them, this is everything which is happening at the Eldorado Ranch today, at this moment. I showed them the new vehicles, vehicles that we have bought in the last four and a half years. I can tell you that the first picture we put two years ago, they were 14. You will see the picture that we will show you today. They are 27, but we are missing one that we bought after we take the picture. So right now, we have at least 28 vehicles, including buses for employees and trucks, pickup trucks, everything. So we will see what we get now. For sure, our fleet is a lot more modern than the one we used to have. We don't have any more Volkswagen's, we keep only one for replace when one of the cars go to the mechanic shop. But right now, we have all Tacomas and Rangers in the security department. So security has improved. And during the slideshow, I will tell you a lot more things that we are doing in security. Projects. In the projects that we have been working very hard is, you have seen the pickable courts, they are totally finished. We still do some work during this period from February to June. Not as big as making the courts because that was the most important part. But we have the best location south of the border and closer to the border in Mexico. The next one is, right now, we are remodeling and redoing the tennis courts, number one and number two. Number one is finished, number two is finished, and we are starting in number four at this moment. So we have been doing a lot of improvement in the condition of our courts. And I can tell you, if you go and see them, you can see that they are first class. The next one is for all the users of the Cachanilla Pools, which include many of the owners at Las Vegas and even at Levantana de Mar. You can see that we have been constructing the pergolas. Right now, we already have three in place, we are starting the fourth one. And we will go doing that one per month until December, and we will go through next year. So we will have enough shades for everyone, everybody. And we will forget about the umbrellas because we were fighting a loss war of that. The next year, we are going to put shades over the pergolas because we don't want to have a zebra residence market. So some people stay enough long, long enough to get a suit, right? But yes, we will, we will put shades in that. Maybe we will start this year. The thing is that we have to see, we are doing a lot of big expenses like the cars, like the courts and all that. You have to be watching the budget close, and we didn't have the shades in the budget. So if we can do it, we will do it this year. If not, we will start this year. The next one is, I am sure that again in Cachanilla, people has to be very, very surprised and happy to see that we have put many chestlons in the pool area. So right now, there's a lot more equipment to lay down, take in the sun, or just relaxing. Okay, this is all about the projects. The number nine is the storms and road maintenance. Storms, you know that we are already hurricane season, we have had already two hurricanes, and we have two disturbances in the south of Mexico that can become hurricanes. Fortunately, they have not come our way, but we are ready for them. And like I told you, we know when they are generating, and we follow them up daily. So we can be aware if we can get problems or not. Right now, we haven't had even not too much rain, very sparse, just showers. But we are looking because this goes from here until October, so it's a long, long way still. And the roads we have been working, in the slideshow, you will see the different roads that we have been doing. And I think so that's another thing that you can see, or maybe you are already experiencing in your areas, different areas of Eldorado. Okay, right now, the next thing to do is a slide presentation. I will move from here. By the way, do you know that Mexico won the second game? We are in the World Cup for the second place. The World Cup here with this, as always. Alright, as always, we have our first slide about the presentation. Our home made in June 2018, Eldorado Ranch, Levantana de Mar, all Las Vegas, with one of our meetings there. Next please. This is an aerial photo of the Cachanilla area. You can see here the courts, here is the pools, here is Highway number five. So this is a nice view of the ranch. Next please. This is one of the speed signs that I have spoken before. Well maintained road conditions, drive slowly, 30 miles per hour. This was a suggestion from Tony Cuevas. Tony, you are sir. As the community. Next one please. Red dirt alert to Saltillo Road Communities. This is all the entrances, Saltillo Road rolls from the number five to the mountains. In each entrance, we are putting red dirt so it's easier and not as damp as it was, so you can walk down in a better way to your home. Next one please. You can saw there, the dump that we are using is our old dump. That can save us a ton of money. Maintenance on Saltillo Road. Tony, remember Mr. Butler in his April presentation about owner presentation about Saltillo Road. We didn't comment at the time, but it was already one week away from our program. But it's okay, if you mention it, we work on that. So maintenance on Saltillo Road, it's finished. We didn't put red dirt because we did it before, but we maintain it. Next please. We have been changing this electronic arm very, very often. Some residents have insisted, so we get new ones because they crush it. So as it's a damage, they pay for it, so we have always a new one very often. And we are repairing the manual gate lifts because of the movement they have, they're heavy. They get damage over time with the humidity and all that, all that. So we are changing them as they are near it. We are not changing all them at the same time or whatever. But when they get very, very damaged, we change them, we make them new, so they are in good condition. And right now, we are making all the necessary things to keep them longer and better. Next please. In the, same thing with the security gates where the guards are. This is the way they were. This is the, this is for the water for the toilet and the sink. When they are in bar, they have to go to the facilities, they have to wash their hands and, I don't know, take some water to drink, whatever. So this is the new water pressure tank and the new pump. This is the way it looks today. You can see it's a lot simpler, less wires, less things, and smaller and better equipment. Next. More efficient too. This is the way we did tennis court number one. We did all the bases of the fencing and nets. We changed the tubs, the pipes. And we then redo all the cement and painted them. We took all the nets out, we give maintenance, and then we return them to their current place. And for sure, the beautification with plants on the sides. And so many things that I presented in February. Next please. Tennis court number two. This was we done completely. All the rest are facing, everything. It was very cracked, it was the one that was in the worst condition. Right now, it looks like this. Like you can see, we took all the fences, the same thing. Right now, if you go, you look it like it's brand new. Next please. This was the condition it was. You can see here the cracks that we have repaired before. And this is when we reopened them to fix them. And here, you can see the guys doing the work, painting the lines, and the finished work. So this is like we are doing that. Next please. Basilic Hall 3, the Jardineir Repair. Sorry for the French that, I didn't remember the name in the English at the time. So they were like this, cracked and not painted. So right now, they look like this. They are like this. This was the old, I mean the finished work without the letters. Here are the letters. Next please. Same thing, but in Basilic Hall number one, the Jardineir Repair. Same thing, it was cracked, it was right now in the finishing process. It looks like this. And we will keep doing this in the next, in the other ones that are cracked. Next please. We remodel a bathroom in Cachanilla in the back of the library, next to the men's room. We are going to remodel the men's and the women's room. Right now, we remodel this one, so it's available. When one of these ones is busy or occupied, you can use this one. It doesn't have a mark, but it has a lock. So if you have to go into there because one of the other ones is busy, you can go in this one, get, use the lock and you are private. We redo the walls, we redo the ceiling, we paint the door, and it looks like that right now. Next please. Activities Room Backdoor Rehabilitation. In the past, this door was blocked, but the activities have been more increasingly being done in the office. So it was very often that during an activity, people had to cross from Lee Jorge's office to the outside, or from the outside to Jorge's office. And it wasn't to run through the classes for the activities. Right now, they have an access from the back, so you can have your activities free of hassle. Next please. If you have the need to visit my office, in the past, we had the railings, so you can go to them. Right now, they added the non-sleep tape. So this is the safety I was talking about. We try to think in everything that can help to keep our community as safe as possible. Next one please. Remember that not long ago, not long ago, we did a warehouse in the Punto Uno area. That we divided in two, one is for security, the other one is by maintenance. On the security side, we make an office, but we put four people in it and they were proud. And fortunately for them, they are all constructed like bodybuilders of American football players. So they were very uncomfortable there. So we make another area in the maintenance area. And instead of buying a new desk, our guys from maintenance make it. So we save a lot of money there too, and you can see that it's very nice. It looks like if we buy it. Next one please. And here is the office. This is, we make a frame, and then we cover it, we paint it, and this is the final work, the final work. There is two people here, one is Roman, and the other one is Marcos, both from maintenance. And there are two guys that are from the security and they are our office. Right now, everybody is happy. Nobody is copying anybody's homework now. Next. Another request, in the library bathrooms, there were many people who, when they go to restroom, they were smoking. So the smell remains, and we were requested to put no smoking sites. Right now, they are there. So you can see, and you tell us something that you would like to see. If it is possible, we do it as soon as possible. Next one please. Cachanilla Clocks 2. Right now, we have one in the entrance and one by the volleyball area. They look nice, and we hope that they have a long life. Next. This is the 25 lounge chairs that we put at Cachanilla Pool. One information that I didn't leave when I was at the table over there is that we don't buy them. We keep all these ones which were damaged, we keep them, we maintain them, we sand it them to new condition, and then we bought net and we install it. So it was a lot cheaper than just buying everything new. And we have another 15 in process, so in total, we will put 40 lounges at Cachanilla. Next. This is the pergolas we were talking about. This is when we start the process, we break the holes, they have to be leveled because they have different heights, it doesn't look like that they have. And because of the level of the ground, so they have to level everything. And the final structure, you have been enjoying them. Right now, we are working the fourth one, like I said. You can see here the stripes of wood, we will cover them with net. Next please. We are still in the process of changing the shades at Cachanilla Pool. Right now, we are, we only have two to go, which is, they are in the volleyball area. We make half of the volleyball area, we still got two or two shades. And here again, they are working in the, in the pergolas. Next please. We have Coyotes visits very often lately. So we make our search of our water deposits around the perimeter. And we saw that some of them were cracked, some of them were not working properly. So we could make 200 gallons cylinders in half. These are plastic, so to note that plastic take like 200 years to disintegrate in the sun. So they will keep longer, and the animals can go drink and they get back to their habitat. Because what was propelling them to come into the communities mainly was the thirst. So we are providing water in these areas, so they come, they visit, and they go back. Next. As always, the maintenance in our equipment is one very important part of the budget. We bought in our Kenworth water truck 2007, a diesel pump. All of this is done in our mechanic shop. That's why we keep it, we save a ton of money doing the work by ourselves. Next. Here, we changed the bushes for water truck 1993, too. Next. We are changing the driver's seatings because, like I said in one meeting before, we have very nice trucks, but the seatings were awful. I sit in a couple of them, and I say, "You know, guys, I want drivers." So I tell them, "No, we are going to make, slowly but steadily, changing all the seats." This is the way they are looking now. Next. We installed a fire canyon in one of our water trucks. And here is a test, and you can see that it gone far away with strong force. I hope so we don't need it, but it's good to have it. We are waiting for another two or three. Those are going to be donated by a friend of the Eldorado Ranch. Next. Water truck 1887, the chassis broke, the wa... 19, sorry, yeah. It was a miracle if we still have it. Point review, give it to me. So you can see that the chassis is broke. We welded it in our mechanic shop, and right now, it looks like this. When you weld it, it's a strong, very strong. So we will be using this truck still for another 100 years. Next please. Maintenance pickup truck, F250 new tires. We changed the whole four tires. Next. Maintenance pickup truck, F2250 suspension. This is Marcos' truck, he's the biggest truck we have, and pickup truck. And usually, when we get a car that broke down, he is the one who talk him to the mechanic shop. So this is our power truck. He just got new suspension. Next. The water truck 1992, here the year is okay. We bought the 10 new tires, so this water truck has wheels for at least another three years. Next. Water truck 1992, time maintenance. The water for roads, the tanks, right here, you can see where we have to weld them. And then we paint them and we reinstall them. And when we do this work, we do the interior too. So it's not just a facelift, we do it rolling, so we can go another two or three years keeping the maintenance at the most. Next. The water truck 1992, differential preparation. You can see here, here, on the... You can see here, here, and the final product already done. Next. Maintenance truck, two new tires. This vehicle used by our Department of Ecology. So we changed two tires on them, the other ones, the other two ones were in good condition. Next please. Grader one, kingpin substitution. The graders have a lot of work. We have three of them in use, so we use them a lot. The kingpin is one of the main parts of the grader. Next one please. Grader one, new hydraulic piston. You can see it here, this is the new one, they're installing it on final position. Next. Grader three, you repair. These ones, we don't have a diesel mechanic at our mechanic shop, but we have a very good mechanic in Mexicali. As a matter of fact, when our graders are not working properly, he comes out, he rebuild them from here. And if this is necessary, then he says, okay, we have to take them more to my shop in Mexicali, he fixes it. And in no more than one week, he's back. So when we provide work to him, he works immediately on it. Next. Back hole, new hydraulic piston, same thing. All of this is subject to a lot of work, tear and wear. Next. We got a new battery charger. Right now, that we have a 28-car fleet. Sometimes, when our batteries, when they get old, we have to start them up to come to the shop and put a new one. So we need the battery charger to go there and put them back to work while they go to a mechanic shop. Or sometimes to charge the batteries at the mechanic shop. Next. One month ago, we have a seminar in Mexicali for pool cherry pots. And we sent six of our employees, three from La Ventana de Mar and three for El Dorado Ranch. So we keep our people trained as much as possible to keep the best conditions in our pools. Next one please. Activities. Bellittas classes, new medals in the tournaments of golf, Desert Tour, so strict farm and night volleyball. These activities, some of there are new. We presented in the last town hall meeting. But we want to refresh sometimes the activities that our activities department do. So everybody is aware that they keep working and trying to embed new things to keep you occupied and having fun. Did you see the ostrich and the big eggs they lay down? People was very enthusiastic at the trip. I wasn't there, but I hear the commentary. Next. In activities car, we repaired the transmission and we put the new battery. We bought an E-eco phone, maybe it's this one. Next. We make another 11 security chair. So remember that we start with the chairs in the entrance of El Zaltito, Punto Dos, which is La Ventana de Mar entrance and Blue Gate. And then we put it in the pools. And now, we put in all the towers that we have in EDR and in all the guards bases that we have around the EDR area and La Ventana. So they can sit and they can have a rest. Same thing in the big towers, the ones that we have like overlooks that we can see four miles. So we can have them upstairs, not standing up, but sitting down so that they can stay longer there, given the conditions of the weather. Next. Okay, the perimeter fence and the sensors, they did 19. We started doing that with the provider, with the supplier of the equipment. But it was more expensive. So we told him, train our people. We want to do it, we want to save money. You will keep selling those parts, but we want to save the making. So we bought a set of tools to do the work. Counting to well when it was necessary. Photo cells to change them. And regulators that have needed to keep the batteries, the solar batteries working. So right now, we have a team of two people. That one is administrative work, but he has time from time. So we can go with the guy who makes the work into the posts and the photo cells and everything. So right now, we are saving a lot more money than we were spending. So next please. Security and welding. This is a CPR kit. Right now, we have a CPR shield. When somebody needs a mouth-to-mouth respiratory resuscitation, we use this mask. You put your mouth here and there is some tube that goes into the mouth of the person who needs the respiratory assistance. So there's not a possibility of contamination back and forth. Sometimes, the people throw out and it's very embarrassing for both of them. So with this, there's no problem, there's no contamination. The kit has gloves, a mask for the guy. And here, in this red bag, is the mask. And here, these are goggles. So everybody is safe. The good thing here is that each of our security supervisors and each guy in the guards hats, they have one of these. Radio case parts, this is for the carcass of the radio, the clips, everything that is needed out of the software. First aid supplies, we have them in hand. Each car, each vehicle has one. So you can be assisted at any time with first aid supplies. Next. Our very old fire truck. Our hostess were cracking because of the sun. And they are very, very expensive. So we put a security fire truck shades on one side where is the sun hits the must. So we will be protecting them. In the future, we want to close it totally. Next. In this year, we bought the last two cars for security. For this year, at Tacoma, 2011. The car is in a very good condition, really, really good condition. And we took out one of the old cars that were in need of change. Next one. And this is the second one, is Tacoma 2010. Still in very good condition too. Right now, we still need a van for next year. When we see the last picture with the employee bosses, I will explain why. Next. Here is the last picture. You can see right now, this is the whole total of equipments we have. We have two buses for employees. You can ask me why. Because sometimes, we have to take the whole load of employees a certain hours. But at another certain hours, we don't need the big truck. So we can do it in this small one, smaller one. And still, we can pick up all the employees we need. But at night, there is another shift that it's only like six employees. So even if we use this one, we are a bigger expense of gas, I mean. So next year, we are going to buy a van for that night shift. So and in case that one of the big ones broke, we'll have two, always ready to go. We have two cars in administration. One is Ricardo Perez, which is the operations manager. The other one is the one I use. And all the rest is maintenance and security. We have water trucks here. Six of them, adult truck and back hole and basket truck. You can see here, different views of the same shape. But still, we need the last Tacoma we bought. Next year, we are going to put this one here and here, Tacoma and the van here. So this is the presentation for EDR. Next. La Ventana de Mar. It's a beautiful view from the ranch of San Felipe Bay. Next please. Here, we finished the pickable carts. We put the plate in the entrance. Was in this condition. Right now, it looks like this. And we changed the... We changed the size of the entrance. So they look like everything else, very good condition. Next please. This is some other work that we did. We changed the bleachers from the pickable courts in Cachinilla, we changed them to the pickable courts at La Ventana de Mar. We fixed some other things that were in need of being changed. This is the work we were doing lately. So right now, it's totally finished. Next please. We bought table chairs, water tanks and trash containers. Next please. This was a contribution from the pickable court. This is for rackets. You can see the paddles, yes, for the paddles. And here, they are installed. So when they are not in use, they can put them there. You don't have to be carrying it all the time. And we put the chairs here and all the, all what we bought around. So there's no trash, there's no, nothing that keeps the courts very clean and playful. Next please. International Pickable Center signing. This was done by the Pickable Club. They wrote these signs, which are very nice, very professional. And it's the United States Pickable Association, United States of America Pickable Association. So this is the way it looks. I think so that our community can feel very proud of the installation of our courts and how they look and very playful. Next please. Perimeter fence repaired behind the pickable courts. This is the fence in the back. Nobody sees them very often, but we maintain them the most we can. We change the bases, we repaint them and we reinstall them. Next. This was at the beach area. You can see that we put them off. Then we bring them to our shop, maintenance shop in La Ventana de Mar. They are work day, primed, painted. And then we return them and we weld them back. So in the interim, we put some fences that we put in place while we take the car ones to the shop. Next please. Same thing at the beach area, right now, the beach area is finished. We did these ones in December, but we have to redo them because they are right on the beach. They receive a lot of moisture. Next. Trash container. We repaint all the area. We construct this wood container. So it is not obvious and it's not on site. And more, even better, nobody who is not from La Ventana de Mar can go and dump their trash in this container. It's only for maintenance and security for the company. Next. Cycling box, they were like this, right now, they look like this. They were redo. Warehouse doors painted, you've never seen these ones. They are in the back of the La Ventana pool. The Palapa pool. All of this is maintenance area, but they were very ugly. So right now, they look like a professional maintenance area. Next. Handicam bathroom, doors painted and a new sign posted. Next. Collection office search repaired. Sometimes, we get complaints from residents who go to pay gratuits at the collection office. Say, you know, this is very rickety. So we change it and we redo it. Right now, it's in good condition again. Here is the new wood we put there. Next please. This is a work we do very often. Here it says Simana Santa, but we do it again in the memorial labor, any big holiday, the 250, everything. Next please. We do the pond trimming, pond tree trimming all around La Ventana de Mar. You can see here. And we are doing that too in EDR. Next. Maintenance, a flags area, La Ventana de Mar. Right now, we have Mexico new flag. We are going to receive Canada a flag next week. So we go changing them as needed. This truck is not ours, this machine, this is from the golf department, what we borrow when we have to do that area to put the grass. Imagine our guys putting it by. This is very impossible. Next please. Sewer manhole at Juanitos area, this is going down to the beach and the left side. Next. Sewer manhole at Pavilion area. This is going down from Gate Blue, Blue Gate to the Pavilion. Next. Electric house in Moli. This is coming from the beach upwards to the Palapa. It was in this condition, not very good to see. Right now, it looks like a resort electric house. Next. We have this water pumping area. Where is, where used to be the property management office in the past, across the road from La Ventana de Mar entrance to the left. And we are pumping this water to the sewer. So here, this morgue were broken. We have to change it. We have to open the roof. And we have to take it out of the roof. This is not a small maneuver and it's dangerous. So we did it. And the last year, we changed a lot of the morgue. This year, we changed this one. So right now, they are in good condition. But sometimes, we have to provide maintenance too. You can see that this one was very, very old. At the same time, we repaired the roof and right now, it's in very good condition too. Next. Here is another view of this one. And you saw when it was going out here. Right now, they are taking it out and here, they are replacing it. So this is all the maneuver that was needed to finish that. This was a short circuit we have in La Ventana de Mar. In area 11, we had to open a big trench. I received like 100,000 calls because of that. What are we doing there? We have our electric shutters, we don't have lights in that area. We changed the wall cable. Right now, we hope that it doesn't happen again. Next please. This was a short circuit in the Palapa. We have to, you can see that everything got fried. So we have to take all out, redo it. And this is the final stage. Right now, we just need to paint it and that will be the end. It will look like granite. Next. This is March to the Sweet Tortues. This is the head of the group and they are marching here. And this plaque is dedicated to Margarita, which many of you get to know. And the lady who donate the totals, sculptors, she said that she was inspired by Margarita to come to live at El Dorado. So she dedicated this plate. We make it in granite, so it will last for a long, long time. Next please. We provide new tools for La Ventana de Mar guys. I can say to you that this guy both retired one week ago after many years of work. So he still have new tools before he left. Yeah. Yeah, you can't make street entrance from La Ventana to the Palapa in good shape. And he trained the guy who is going to take his place. Next please. This is activities in La Ventana de Mar side too. So we have the giant Jenga, which is the activity, the modern day golf tournament and the full moon watch ball prizes. So still having fun. Next. Last digress. I like to see this coming out. This is the way that the golf course is coming back. If you haven't been around, yet I hope, go around, it's looking good. Still not totally back, but I took, like I told you before, a tour around two weeks ago. And I was really, really well surprised at seeing how it's coming back. Next. We keep putting new reflective posts. It's, here is in a curve, so you can be aware at night mainly because in the... So you can be aware at night mainly because in these areas there are not lamps. So the people can see that there is a curve and there are the posts. Next. Caution, this is a blind curve too. So this is letting you know that here is where the sewer area in the down area of the condos is. And here is a blind turn. So we are, we make a notice here. Please be careful. And this is the other side of the other street. Next please. New signs at the vias one and two, the pool numbers. You can see that this was done before. This looks better. Not the best I would like, but look better. And the new sign for the hours of the pool. Next. Broken window that we are changing. This one has partial cost to the owner because it's the docked holes from the insurance company. We changed it at 142 or 142. Next. Forty-four, forty-three, four or four thirty-four. A water leak repair at condo thirteen area. As I said before many times, we have to open the earth, go down until we found a leak and then redo it everything again. Next. Water leak repair at condo twenty-one, twenty-one three, right in front of it. Next please. Roof repair at condo two oh four. Our lease of roof repairing is getting shorter and shorter. Right now we have like eight only. For sure there will be coming more because the condos right now, they have 14 years already more or less. The work has to be done from time to time, but it's not as extensive or hard as before. And not as many. Next. We painted completely condo twenty-eight. Next. And condo eighty-eight too. So this is the wall for units totally. You can see that the doors are painted, everything, all everything. It's, it's in brand, new brand condition. Next. Okay, this is the presentation. I think so. Brilliant.
Perry, on that presentation, we were talking about repair of walls and said, "Ranch of Del Sol three."
Yes.
That is Ranch of Del Sol three up there with the sale.
You're right. Okay, we need to check that and we will replace it with the right.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, now we go for the questions and answer session. Steve Kimi will take the microphone as the first speaker. Thank you, Steve.
Hi, I'm Steve Kimi. For those that don't know me, I live in Greeno Vista, which is part of the electric, non-electric area in the outside. I am also the president of the EDR Supervisor Group and the editor of the newsletter. I wanted to bring up some, first off, I want to thank Roberta for mentioning the newsletter. I want to bring a couple of things up. He talked about the two open positions for supervisors on the seaside, starting in the July newsletter. It should have been in June, I forgot, my bad. We will have information on how you submit if you want to rent the supervisor and where you can put your CV in and get it published. So people that are not down here or do not attend the GA meetings can hear about you and vote with their proxies if they want to vote you. So that will start in July, August, September, October, that'll be forward. The other thing I'd like to bring up with the newsletter is that summertime tends to be a slow period for news. There's not a lot going on here. So we're trying something new this year with doing features. Starting in July, the first feature. I think this will be adventurous to a lot of people and at least anybody that goes to the States once in a while. I was in a meeting on Thursday in Collexico with city officials, police department, border and security, general services administration about the new border. I have a press release that was issued the 18th of June. I have architectural drawings, engineering drawings, data sheets, timelines. And we're going to have a special on the new border opening. Southbound into Mexico, July 10th, new border. July 10th, southbound, new border. Northbound, September 1st. Details will be in the newsletter. So if you care about crossing, read the newsletter in July. It's all going to be in there. The other thing we're going to do for August, and the supervisors have discussed this. One of the big issues that we find with sales, where people coming down here to rent or anything else is medical services. They don't know what's available. So we're going to be doing a special for medical services on BMC, Cruz Roja. If you want to move down here and you're not on system security, what are your options? IMSS, private insurance? That's going to be the special in the August newsletter. So again, if you care and you don't know, everything's in the August newsletter. So we're trying to beef up the newsletter to give you more information. If there are things that you'd like to see in the newsletter, reply to the newsletter. All replies to the newsletter comes to me. I take that information and we tweak the newsletter based on information we get back from people. So if you have ideas, please pass them on. We want to hear those things. So anyhow, read the newsletter. That's where you're going to get a lot of information on what's happening. Oh, the other thing is, I spoke with the lady at Collexico who issued a press release. I'm going to try to get her down here for the September town hall so she can talk to you and you can ask her. She owns property south of town. So she gave me a tentative maybe. So if we can get her down here, you'll be able to hear it right from the horse's mouth. So that's it. So thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sammy Ashpool. We live in Pashto, Sol. If you take that entrance, like Pashto, Sol, then you turn right to Pashto, Sol. And you follow the road. There's a ninety degree curve there with no warning signs or anything. Now, we live there, we know that, but when we are guessing something at night, it's very dangerous. I would request that we add a ninety degree turn sign over there. And one more thing for the recycling. I think we need another bin for glass bottles. You know, because now they're doing it, just putting them on the, on the road there.
Charlotte Hart, condo thirty-two four. Thirty-two four condo, Charlotte Hart. One of the safety issues that I feel goes on here on weekends, people come in with fireworks and they go off constantly. I don't know if other areas get in the condo areas and the ones that go up in the air. It could cause a fire. So that's a safety issue. I have other things, but I'll move to the end of the line. When, when the condos are cleaned by the maintenance companies after renters are there, quite often the garbage is left in just one of those big plastic bags and left in the driveway and the dogs get into it and make a terrible mess. I think the condo maintenance management people need to supply cans or whatever and not just leave these plastic bags out there. My last thing was the main road as you come into Laventana del Mar. It, it's cement and it has holes in it. It gets worse every year when the big races come on and the holes are getting bigger. And I'm wondering if there's anything in the budget to repair those. And I noticed when you guys fix, fix the roads, they come from the old gate and they come to here. But they very seldom go up that way. And those roads are getting to feel like I'm going into Pete's camp. Thank you.
Let me make a commentary there. We do the roads in this side because it's dirt. To the beach. Oh, okay, here there, okay. We'll take care of those ones. The ones that come from the trans Laventana del Mar to the Palapa, we can do them because they are still developer's roads. That's why we don't do them. Yes.
My name is Gemma Sutton. I live in condo two four and I agree with everything you just said. We see the trash, we see the roads, the same thing. I have a couple of other items I want to say. Whoever thought about declining ATVs is brilliant. We listened to them all night, up and down, on the golf course. I did have a question on that. When is that being implemented?
It's already being implemented because right now we cannot do this from today to tomorrow because the companies that rent houses have reservations made long time ago. So for a guy who rented one year ago and is coming tomorrow, you cannot say you cannot bring your toys down. So since this was done in June 1st, so from June 1st, come on, they are informing all their new guests, you are not allowed to bring your toys. Or, well, let me explain. I will give a little more of explanation. Right now in the other side of the street, where is the SIMA guy who is with the internet service and all that, to the right side in the back, which is the trans to the old road circle, which is there, they can use that one. A parking lot is being made. It's going to have like 107 spaces, something like that. So all the people who wants to bring their ATVs and all that, they will have to park over there. They are not allowed to go into Laventana del Mar and they will pay a rent over there. It's not ruled or done by the HOA. It's going to be by the developer. As a matter of fact, the ban of the vehicles is the ban from the developer. It's not the HOA because we don't have the authority. And it's not our business. We are an association which provide services to the residents. So we are helping them to do the things because it's good for all the community for sure, but it's going to be run by the developer.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
My next comments are on the pool. I'm at the pool probably 29 out of 30 days a month. We really need umbrellas. I am watching women that are 65 years old drag an umbrellas in. The pergolas that are at the activity pool are great. On the other side, we're sitting there with tables, no umbrellas. At one point, we were allowed to leave them in the activities office. We were told you can't do that anymore. I'm sure that there's a group of us that will pay for the umbrellas if we can leave them there. We have to have umbrellas.
We handle that.
Thank you. My next, my pool things.
Give me one week because we have a space in the back, but I was there yesterday and I ordered to clean it. So let us clean it up and we can storage them.
Thank you. You know where the corner where the ladies play the games and. The other thing is that at a prior meeting, there was mention of replacing the grates around the pool. A couple of days ago, a woman fell through one. I saw it. Or is that plan still in progress?
Yes, let me explain this. I don't know who was the idea of buy these things in Spain. So to get them is very, very hard. We finally locate them where we can buy them. We are ordering them, but it will take like an hour and a half to, for they to arrive. In the meantime, we were doing mail ones, new ones. Because as a matter of fact, we, we haven't find them in four years. So finally we found them. One of our suppliers said, you know, finally I found them in Spain. And we are, we are ordering them. So with them, but they will be coming down in another 45 days, more or less.
Two more things, everyone else can talk. The activity pool has grates at the bottom. I personally watched someone remove his whole toenail. I grabbed it onto one of those grates. Is there any intention of replacing those with grates on a flat opposed to the raised ones?
We have been trying to do that. The supplier says they, they cannot have them. Because yes, I have been aware of that, but we haven't find them either.
Okay.
If somebody can help us or knows where to get them, just, just help us with that and we will change them.
Okay, and your safety, two more comments, I'm done. Your safety, sand and speeding going down here. Sanli Bay vacation rentals is the worst. I walk my dog three or four times a day and they're flying through there. So maybe we can talk to them about slowing it down?
As a matter of fact, we have a committee from, which the head of the committee is Marta Riza, which is a supervisor. So I will talk with her to call them for an appointment and talk with them directly.
Thank you. One last comment and then I'm done. Several months ago, there was a resident whose bumper got in an accident with the two lions up there. And he was approached by a representative of the ranch. He paid $700 for replacement of these lions and they have not been replaced. Is that something you would look into? Where? At the construction gate, the two concrete lions over there? That gate? There were two lions there. Lion.
The lions.
The lions.
We don't have nothing to do with that. That's Caesar or.
Those were, those were the rage.
Oh, no, but I, I know it's Caesar from, from a memory I just bought in NASA.
No, that was not who was paid for the $700.
Who received the money? Let me find out.
Finally, who received the money and where the money went if the lions have not been replaced? I find that kind of disturbing.
As a matter of fact, I have been asking for those lions to go away for years.
Okay.
Really. I have done that for a long time. And when I see that somebody hit them, I say, "Thank you."
And you accept money for umbrellas?
No, I don't know if we received the money. I can't say that because I doubt we received the money, but let me check. Someone find out.
Thank you very much. I know they got the money.
Yes, Ross.
Okay, three quickies. First on the turtles. I think that was fabulous to put them together and honor Margarita that way and so forth. I mean, it's a great idea, but as you yourself said, it makes a wonderful photo opportunity. But unfortunately, where they're at doesn't. I've been trying my heart out to get a decent picture of them. And there's always cars there. As you, in your own presentation, there was a car. So my recommendation would be to move to the end so you have a sea in the background. But I've done a lot to the side or down where the driving range is or something. Or, I don't know, somewhere where there's not all the cars there all the time.
I think it's so easy to move the cars parking to another place.
Could be, but I don't know. That's just throwing it out there. The other is the pergolas, I think, are great. Thank you for taking the recommendation to put the shade things on the top. But I think 20 or 24 or 30 or whatever the number is, if you say all through next year plus these and going into the following year, I think that's too many. So I don't know. I recommend saving a little money and not having that many. They are nice, but I, I think because they're dark and there's a lot of them, it may visually detract. And there are a lot of people that do want to, you know, be able to sun. So I don't know what the plan is. Maybe if you put that in a newsletter or something, which I think frankly, you should do all the time anyway. When there's major projects like that, kind of get a neighborhood feeling as to what do you think, you know, rather than just doing it. So I'd like to see that, kind of a layout of what you currently have planned, where they're going to be and you might get some input. Lastly is a question. I had read a few months ago that Sanli Bay has no recycling program. And that when, when you do all the separation here, they nicely pick it up separated, then they dump it all into one truck and they go. So I just kind of like to know if that's true. Not that I want to discourage. I think recycling is very important. But if it's just an exercise, I, I think we're entitled to know that and maybe we can have some input into getting recycling done by Sanli.
Yeah, let me give a explanation on that. I talked directly with Gary Thilby from the dumps company and doctors company. And he explained to me, for having a recycling factory here, we need at least a community, I mean. I mean in San Felipe, at least of more than sixty thousand people. Right now, we are around twenty thousand. So we have to triple our population for it will be, uh, economic viable. If not, he will be spending more money or whoever tries to do it. He make a proposal to the city, but he hasn't get an answer yet. What we are doing here is, for example, what we do with the cans we get, the rowboat team picks them up, and they sell them and they can get more, uh, revenue for the kids who are the growing guys of San Felipe, and they are full with medals of the events they go internationally and all that. Many of these kids are not from rich families, they are from many humble families, and you can see that they are very strong with everything because they don't even need sometimes properly. So what, uh, the, the intention is to try to provide them with, uh, nutrients, powders and all that, that they sell in the professional stores with that. Uh, that's why the collection of different trash bins is intended, so they can only pick up the aluminium, which helps them up. The other ones, uh, we try to separate them, to try to teach the city that we have to make the effort to do this. For sure, when they come and take out it, they goes to the Dobster and everything is put together. That's the truth.
Okay, and I think that's a worthy effort, but in that, uh, regard, we do the similar thing at the pool where there's a special bucket for beer cans. Uh, so if you've got one over here for cans, maybe if you made it clear or for metal, uh, that it's beer cans, because somebody must have to go through there if it's just metal and it's not a fun job, I'm sure. Uh, but if there's one that's strictly for beer cans and it's noted that this is a charity event, there's donated and so forth, I think people would be more likely to put their beer cans in there only unless in the work for whoever currently is separating those out. Uh, maybe it says beer cans already, I don't know.
Soda cans too.
Anything that is...
Or any cans that have a, any kind of a bit of value to them, yeah. All right, so thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Good morning, I'm Toby Morag of Buena Vista. Uh, I've got a couple of questions or comments relative to the golf course. Is there any way to put signage or do publication to educate the pedestrians that walk across the golf course? It's dangerous. And I don't know what the liability factor is, but, uh, typically on golf courses, if a pedestrian crosses that golf course, they get hit with a ball that's on them. But a golf, a golf ball to the head is, can be fatal. So something needs to be done. I don't know whether it is the non-golfers that live in the community that are walking across the course, or if it is the tourists and the renters, but they need to understand that the golf course is for golf and they choose to walk across, they're placing themselves in danger because they can't always see when someone is on the tee or in the fairway and they're putting a ball in flight or where that ball is going to land. Uh, relative to the road, I put in a maintenance order a month ago. Um, I did it in the homeowner association office, I also did it online, nothing has been done. Uh, in the roadway from Buena Vista seventy-eight hundred, whoever is grading that road is not actually grading it all the way to the edge, they've left a rut that has a certain amount of dirt buildup and it narrows the road so that if you get two cars coming, one of them has to give way. Buena Vista seventy-eight hundred, the road that goes all the way up. Um, I've also mentioned this before, rocks. I, how many of you have got cracks in your windows from rocks that are getting thrown up by cars in front of you because they're being left in the roadway? And in some cases, at the entrance to hacienda de Sol, uh, I can't believe that it's impossible to hand the security guard a rake and ask them to rake the rocks at the entrance to hacienda de Sol and the other areas. If you remember, I brought you a rock.
Yes, one of the things is that we don't have that many people. That's the truth. And, uh, the people who has been close to, for example, the construction of the tennis and pickleball courts, when we do that work, we stop the rest of the maintenance. Because we put all the people we have, except a couple for emergencies around, in the construction of the courts. The guys who do the grading, they have enough streets to grade. If they start going down to pick up the rocks, we will do a lot less roads. We need a lot more people, but we need a lot more paid owners too.
Okay, I, I...
That's why we, that's why I have been increasing the number of workers because there is people who is not paying. So when I get those people to pay, I can hire more people and we will clean it up. This doesn't mean that we will not try to clean it.
Steve, at the entrance to the communities, those security people that are in the booths, they are not fully occupied all day, every day.
Yeah, I know.
Are you telling me that you cannot handle a rake and ask them to clear the entrance to the communities of the large rocks?
That's different. If we talk about their surrounding area, yes.
That's what I'm talking about.
But if we talk all the way up to the end of seventy-three, that's a different story.
At the same, this same...
The entrances we can do with them. The entrances we can do with them.
I made that suggestion at the same meeting last year.
Maybe I didn't got the idea right.
I brought you the rock.
Yeah, I saw the rock, but that doesn't mean, I understand everything.
Okay. Um, the trash bins and the trash enclosures, uh, maybe something could go into the newsletter, maybe you can also talk to the contractors that are authorized to build on the ranch, and maybe you can also talk to the disposal company that does the collection. There are nails, there is rebar, there is wire that is left out in the area in front of the trash containers, and it is going to cause punctures to tires, it is going to cause damage to vehicles, and so it's just a matter of being well conscientious about what they do.
We can do that through the TRC because we have a list of contractors, so we can talk with them.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
I am Jean Bernan, I live at this the dog bar. Uh, you guys have mentioned about recycling. I have a great solution. I have gone here for twelve years for this way in the world, and I do this religiously. And if you take your products to the Play It Again, the Gunda Delta, they will be more than happy to take it. I was there yesterday, I had dropped off several bags. There must have been eight people come up with other bags, uh, aluminium, uh, plastic, anything they can get, they would take, they take it to Vexicalic, and all that money goes to this way in Newbury that helps San Felipe animals. And I strongly suggest you do that instead of wasting the time maybe over here, put it to good use, laser for the animals of San Felipe. Thank you.
Uh, good morning, my name is Tori Quivers. I live in, uh, Palo Verde in Northern Number Two, I've been here at full time for thirteen years now, it seems like yesterday. But, uh, a question that I got, Roberto, is concerning Saltillo Road. I know with the last meeting with Pat Wunder here, I kind of, you know, kind of mentioned to him deep about that road. Now, who recommends it to be maintained? Is it maintained like graded once a month, twice, three times? Who makes the call? Because what I usually do is when that road is getting tore up, I go in there, put a request for action. Now, is there a schedule as far as, you know, being done twice, three times a month?
If you can, if you want to see the scale, talk with Ricardo Perez, he has a goal plan for the whole community. It's a yearly plan.
Yeah, because like I'm saying is, I mean, that road gets tore up, right now, a lot of the snowbirds are gone, but there still gets a little bang or bumpy and stuff. And I remember you said a couple meetings back, maybe last year sometime, that you take a ride every Saturday after work and you go up some of your road, and you determine if it needs to be graded or not, you know, so...
Not me, there is a plan already, but when we go in our tours, if we see something that is obvious, we, we redo that.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you. Anybody else?
Okay, guys, thank you very much for reminding me that our next town hall meeting is in September twenty-third. Thank you very much, again.